Okay, we're gonna have a presentation. I think, I'm not sure who's presenting, whether to Mark or whomever on the American Rescue Plan. So take it away.
Thank you, Council. This is Mark Gasway, and I will be introducing our program coordinator, first of all. But I wanted to let you know that the last few weeks, we've been very busy working throughout the county, gathering information for you, and preparing this presentation so that you can make some good decisions as far as giving us direction on what to do with the American Rescue Plan funding that the county's received. It's been a very busy time. We've reached out to, I think, just about every department and office throughout the county. And we are, we've summarized that in this presentation today, and we will be asking for some continued direction as we go forward. So I'm going to turn the time over to Laura Young, and she will proceed with the presentation. And the two of us will be kind of sharing those responsibilities as we go along. So Laura, if you want to go, and we're ready for the next slide.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Good morning, everyone. As Mark said, my name is Laura Young. I'm the new program coordinator for ARPA with Clark County. Thank you for sharing your time with us today. I'm gonna go ahead and turn off my camera while we speak, so we can just focus on the slides. Today, I will be providing an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds that are available to counties in addition to the state and local fiscal recovery funds that we've already received. The American Rescue Plan Act encompasses multiple funding opportunities and resources aimed at economic and social stability in addition to addressing the immediate public health crisis precipitated by the COVID-19 pandemic. In this slide, I have shared a snapshot of an interactive tool developed by the National Association of Counties. The tool allows counties to search by each of the categories listed and identify additional resources that are available through ARPA to meet individual counties' needs. As an example, as this example demonstrates, in addition to the $362 billion allocated to the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which is in the upper left-hand corner, the counties are also eligible to apply for additional resources, including $56 billion for individuals and families, $211 billion for education and childcare, $86 billion for healthcare and behavioral health, and $61 billion for other programs, including emergency management systems, disaster relief, and humanitarian relief, which may become relevant later in the presentation. ARPA also includes $65 billion for broadband infrastructure to be distributed to states. For this fund, the state of Washington has set aside $400 million in the 2123 biennial budget for broadband infrastructure investment across the state as well. Next slide, please. The preliminary funding allocations for Clark County will occur in two equal disbursements. The county received the first $47.35 million in June of 2021, and is anticipated to receive the second tranche of funding in June of 2022. All funds must be obligated by December 31, 2024, and expended by December 31, 2026. So there's a lot of time to decide how to move forward with these funds. However, we are also being mindful of the time constraints for the 2021 fall supplemental and 2022 regular budget requests and timelines. Next slide, please. Today, we are seeking guidance and approval from Council for the direction and concepts we are proposing in this spending plan. Currently, the auditor's office is in the process of engaging county departments and other agencies to identify priorities and potential synergies and requests. We are also in the process of calculating the total revenue loss and expenditures related to COVID-19. The final total revenue loss will be available after the Treasury release of the final ruling guidance sometime near the end of July 2021. The next steps for the funding plan include reviewing 2021 and 2022 spending plans and funds requests with Council and Budget Office, confirming eligibility once the Treasury final ruling guidance is received, and working with departments to leverage other grants and funding, and presenting project-specific staff reports and budget to Council for budget approval. Next slide, please. Currently, we have received approximately $28 million in total funding requests from internal and external sources in addition to the $15.5 million allocated to affordable housing and combating homelessness. In addition to the requested funds, we anticipate recovering approximately $9.5 million from revenue loss for 2020. This leaves approximately $43.2 million in other funds still available for allocation. Next slide, please. The estimated revenue recovery in 2021 is $9.5 million for the revenue loss in 2020. Approximately $5.8 million of the recovered revenue is committed to general fund, and the remaining $4 million available to other funds to cover other general government expenses. It is important to note that the revenue recovery may be recalculated annually during the covered fiscal years of 2021, 2022, and 2023 at the discretion of Council, but it must be recalculated if additional revenue loss is claimed. The range of maximum allowable revenue recovery per year during the covered period for the county is anticipated to be approximately $10 million per year, pending the final revenue loss calculation. It should also be noted that all recovered revenues must be reinvested in government services. Additionally, as ARPA requires revenue loss to be calculated annually over the next three fiscal years, if claimed, the amount recoverable is based upon the base year 2020 actual losses as compared to revenues received over the average of the prior three fiscal years of 2017, 2018, and 2019. Next slide, please. Internal requests for technology services, operations, and infrastructure to date total approximately $42 million, including the affordable housing and homelessness, public health response, prosecuting attorneys and indigent defense, technology services, and other smaller departmental requests. Next slide, please. In addition to the $15.5 million already approved by Council to support the community's affordable housing, rental, and utility assistance, homeownership, and other services to prevent and combat homelessness, we are requesting Council approval for the ARPA SLFRF spending plan to support technology services, public health, the prosecuting attorney's office, and indigent defense, and facilities department funding requests to address the following needs: $10 million for enhancement of cybersecurity and technology and data systems; $8.5 million for staffing and equipment expenses to continue providing services for public health; $5 million for additional prosecuting attorneys and indigent defense staff to address the backlog of cases related to the COVID-19 shutdown; and to be determined, infrastructure investment to support safe and efficient facilities, operations, and space reconfiguration. For further elaboration on this topic, I will turn the presentation over to Mark Gasway.
Thank you, Laura. Before we go on to the next slide, Council, just wanted to check and see if you have any questions. Basically, what we're doing is kind of outlining some broad categories based on the requests that we've received from our internal departments. And these are the classifications that we have: about $10 million in technology needs, about $8.5 million for the Health Department, $5 million for the prosecuting attorneys and indigent defense. And then the third category, there's about $3 million from other departments that include community development, district court, some other smaller requests that we just combined together. And I just want to check and see if you have any question about any of those before I move on to the next proposed idea.
Are there questions in the Council?
Yes, I have a question on the staffing. There's quite a bit of many millions here going for staffing. What terms is that supporting, and is it something that is understood to be concluded at the end of the ARPA funding?
Yes, that's a very good question, Councilwoman Brierman. All of the staffing that would be included with this funding would be project-related. So it's limited in time. As you know, this is one-time money. It's not to increase ongoing staffing. A lot of it happens to administer the current either backlog, or we have a current demand to get services out into the community. So any of the staffing associated with this is temporary.
Other questions? Councilor?
Mark, I'm curious about, and maybe there's been discussion that I haven't heard or whatever, this $10 million for cybersecurity and technology data systems. That also seems like, and I know how critical it is, and we're getting this ransomware all over the place, but if there's some breakdown of that particular topic in terms of how we get to that $10 million?
Yes, and we have a lot of detail behind each of these numbers. And what I'm proposing is that as we get to the specific request, today, we're looking for the direction, right? As we get to specific requests, you would be provided with all of the detail required. For example, Mike Sprinkle and IT has prepared a very good summary of all of those needs. And as you talk about cybersecurity and other things, there's also network needs that we need to provide to continue enhancing our remote workers. There's a lot of things that are involved in there. Also, with the Health Department, they have much more details. And before any spending would be approved, we would have a detailed staff report presented to Council with all of that information. For example, the prosecuting attorney, any of those requests would come through a normal staff report, budget action. Today, we're looking at direction. This is where we're going. So does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. So if there's no other questions, we'll go on to the next slides. One of the kind of overarching themes that we found as we were talking with departments, and including our sheriff's office, our facilities department, our internal service departments, we're finding that because of COVID and because of the ongoing likelihood of remote work, we need to start looking at our space utilization, and we will be required to do some reconfiguration to accommodate that. Now, what this allows us to do, it allows us to use space right now that currently isn't being utilized. And so there's been some discussion out there about how we can best utilize space. One of the, I think, major projects that has been kind of put on hold currently is what do we do with the Justice Center as far as repurposing or remodeling the Justice Center, the jail, basically, so that we utilize that space? So this gives us an opportunity to, with this one-time funding, to take all of those issues, all of those reconfiguration, building reconfiguration, spatialization, the remodeling of the Justice Center, and combine those together and gives us a funding source to actually address some of those issues. This is, if I tried to look at all of the major issues that we currently aren't addressing, this is probably one of those major needs. You've already allocated funding. We have a huge amount of funding going to the homeless, affordable housing issue, close to $75 million at this point. The Health Department has received sufficient funding and is requesting sufficient funding to help them through the rest of the pandemic and prepare for future possible problems in the future. So this is kind of the last remaining piece that we're experiencing right now without really a funding source. But this gives, I think, the county an opportunity to do something significant that will have a lasting impact and benefit the county for years to come. So I wanted to take some time with Council and have a discussion on this particular topic. We have about $40 million that currently isn't committed to anything. We haven't had requests for it, and it could be applied in this area and make a significant progress towards the facility issue that we currently have. So I want to, again, have that discussion with Council and see where you're at on this, if this is a direction you'd like us to continue to go. So Chair O'Brien, if we can turn it back to Council for discussion.
Are there other comments on this particular piece?
I have a question as well, as well. Thank you. So I saw this slide on Justice Center repurposing, and then a later slide calls for Justice Center remodeling. So those aren't the same two things. So I'd like you to explain what's intended at this point with the Justice Center. I just want to make a general comment to, before you address that. You know, all of this is an opportunity, and I know and understand that you understand that. It's got to take a lot of creativity. And what we're looking for is, at least for, and you mentioned the homeless additional money we just allocated a bunch. You know, we're looking for things that are ultimately going to be long-lasting, have long-lasting impacts, but sustainable at the same time. And that gets to Karen's question about these project positions or contract positions for increased staffing. You know, we have a real opportunity here to invest in our gaps that we've experienced and to invest in programs. So for instance, with the homeless, I don't want to just provide a lot of money to the streets unless each and every person is lifted out of homelessness and then can be self-sustaining on their own afterwards. So that's going to take constant measurement of what is being successful and what is not. So we have a lot of work ahead of us. So the only other point I would make is, you know, I've really wanted to get to the issue of public defense. And the big hurdle is how do we invest in that to put it in place? And I'm wondering if we have that ability. And the goal is obviously to provide the very best in public defense, but at the same time, create efficiency, because I just can't imagine these 60 to 80 individual contracts are efficient. To create efficiencies so that we ultimately have a self-sustaining, credible lease cost option for public defense. So I just throw that idea out there as well. So going back to the Justice Center, what's proposed there?
Thank you, Councilman Edgby. And I think you summarized it maybe a little bit better than I did when you talked about gaps. Was we, as I was looking through this, this is one of the biggest gaps that I think is out there that doesn't have funding. And to your point of one-time, how do we use this one-time funding most effectively? The two words, repurposing and remodeling, are, in my mind, a little bit synonymous. What the current situation allows us to do is reconfigure space in existing buildings that we already own as a county, move people out of the Justice Center, and then repurpose it for courtrooms and for other things that will be needed, not only needed, but allow us to be more efficient in our operations. In addition, there have been deficiencies identified within the current jail. For example, you know, the intake area has been talked about for some time. This would also address those issues as well. So rather than say I don't know, repurpose, remodel, you know, however you want to term it, this would allow us to do, again, with one-time money that will have a lasting impact, it will allow us to do that exercise. So again, this is a suggestion, a gap, a large gap that seems to be out there that we just don't have any resources to apply to right now. And in my mind, I can't think of another area that is as prevalent as this gap, so.
That said, Mark, I think I'm still missing the answer to the question. You're saying that repurposing and remodeling are essentially the same thing, but they appear in two different places in this presentation? Are they the same thing?
Yes. And the repurpose, for example, if we were to move out the administrative offices of the sheriff and repurpose that as courtrooms, we would have to remodel it to do that. So does that make sense? It's two different words.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. But the follow-up question to that is, and I almost hate to ask it, how does this apply to COVID?
Sorry, how does this apply to COVID?
Yes.
So the funding for ARPA is much broader than specific applications to COVID. It is intended to be used in various categories, and as we receive the requests from departments, we determine whether or not they're eligible. This type of project is right in line with the guidance that we've received for the ARPA funding.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Are there other questions, Mark, on this?
Mark, would you extend your answer there to Eileen just a little bit more? How is it applicable to ARPA?
How is this particular project?
Yes, the Justice Center repurposing remodeling.
Yes. What they've done is they've, in the eligibility requirements, they're asking us to provide, in this case, this would be an expenditure towards an infrastructure project, or eventually a capital-type project that would have an impact on general government, which is what we do, right? I mean, law and justice is part of our general government project. And so there's direct applicability in the guidelines for this type of project. I don't know if that, it's helpful. I'm trying to think of how to break this down more easily. And maybe Laura, if you want to chime in, you might have the eligible expenditure terminology a little bit better than I do. I think Laura's on mute, but.
I gave it a full time. Yes, Mark, you're correct. There are four areas, general areas of eligibility, and within one of those areas is infrastructure investment, and specifically, infrastructure investment in government and in areas where we experienced a negative economic impact or COVID impact. And so there are actually examples all over the country right now of very similar Justice Center and court systems improvements, as well as many, many other types of public infrastructure. But I could provide the actual specific guidance to Council if that would be helpful.
What you have said has been very informative, and thank you. I wasn't sure about the extension beyond its application to COVID and the COVID's impact on the county. So you've answered that, and thank you.
Thank you.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead. Chair O'Brien, did you, you were about to?
I was just going to say to go ahead.
Any other questions on this? Again, I'm going to use Councilman Edgby's terminology of gaps. As we've been trying to identify gaps, this appears to be one of the biggest gaps that we have in funding in the county. We know we have to do space utilization. We know that because of COVID and because we'll be moving to remote workers, we're going to have to do building reconfiguration. So all of the pieces, if we combine these together, we can fit them into this project, and it allows us to achieve a result that I believe, you know, one of the requirements of ARPA is how will this benefit your government and your citizens long-term? And so those reporting requirements will be built into the specific project as it's developed. And again, the spending of this will be presented to Council in a staff report form at some point. So if we could go to the next slide, please. I think we're done with questions on this one. Okay. Then we can go back to this, and I'll turn the time back over to Laura. This just talks about, we did receive a small number of outside requests, and we have an idea of how we can address those outside requests. So Laura, let me turn the time back over to you.
Thank you, Mark. So we have, as Mark said, we've also received a small number of requests from outside the county offices. If Council has an interest in funding external requests, we recommend opening an external process so that Council can evaluate these and future external and community-based requests. We have received requests for funding from two special-purpose districts, which you see here on this slide, North Country Emergency Medical Services Fire and Rescue to increase the COVID-19 response capacity in unincorporated Clark County, and Clark Regional Wastewater District to support ratepayers experiencing COVID-19 negative economic impacts. And so this is just, where I put a note is, when, back in Slide 2, we talked about potential other resources, that this would be an area where we might want to pursue additional resources for our partners in the community. In addition, we have received requests for funding from community-based nonprofit organizations, including Support for Prairie Field Association, a nonprofit community center's operating budget, and two additional that came after this slide, Support for Vancouver Clinic for COVID-19 Response Overtime Pay, and Support for the Ark of Southwest Washington as well for COVID Response Overtime Pay. Next slide, please.
So if I could just add real quickly, so, Council, what we may want to do is set aside a fund and take grant proposals, like it would be, you know, a million or $2 million or whatever, and set it aside and say, okay, now we're going to take these individual grant proposals, and we could evaluate those individually. That way, I think it gives everyone in the community an opportunity to request this funding. I know we've received a few, but, you know, two or three, there may be others out there if they knew funding was available that would be interested. So what I guess I would suggest to Council is maybe we set aside a little bit of this fund and then take grant proposals in, and then you could evaluate those in context of other proposals.
Sounds good.
I like that.
Chair, I had a comment based on the last slide as well, if I may. Thank you. So, and we have been tracking on trying to creatively find ways to support like a pool for the YMCA. There is probably a number of these nonprofit requests that are going to be really beneficial to the greater community. So I would emphasize the point you just made. I think we need to set aside a significant amount of money for these potential purposes. You know, and aside to that is, I didn't see any slide other than the very first on broadband. You know, I understand our utilities don't want to really take it on. I don't think our county wants to become a broadband provider. But I've also heard that Comcast is a private partner that may be willing to step up. And so we have not only state money, but federal money and a push for this, and it could be great for the port areas, for the railroad, for my district in particular. So I didn't see it as a specific bullet. I had just talked to Lindsay Schaefer the other day about following up, because I've been working with her over the last year and a half on trying to crack that nut on how do we get high-speed internet throughout the county. I mean, there are places in Canvas, Washougal, certainly in the Atkold and Amboy that are very poorly served, even though they may be fairly urban. So somehow, we need to get some emphasis. So I, somehow we need to get some emphasis on this broadband to take it full advantage and, and make a lasting change for the county in that area. So do you have any other additional information on broadband and that, that initiative?
Yeah, let me, let me kind of summarize. One of the things that we're taking on is being a resource, not just for the funding that the county has received directly, but to be knowledgeable about all of these other sources. There's so many revenue streams out there, counselor. There are it's really hard unless you are involved in this on a daily basis to know where to go. So as we receive those requests, or if you receive those requests, you can refer them to us and we will be a liaison to show, for example, broadband's a very good point. The state in their budget approved four hundred million for broadband and the county has the opportunity to leverage that money without using our direct distribution. So there's, there's a a large amount of money that we could use for, for broadband, but how do we do that? Well, if, you know, Comcast is interested in picking that up, they can contact us. We'll work with the either the state or whatever agency is providing that funding so that we make sure that if there's a project that qualifies for it, then we can access it as a county. So we're able to so we're able to, sorry about that. So we're able to leverage not just our direct contribution, but these billions of dollars that the federal government and the state government is providing. That's, that's how I kind of see our role right now.
Maybe we should consider a project position to fill our economic development vacancy to focus just on these very issues.
We got, I just noted that. We'll, we'll have that discussion with Kathleen and see what she thinks.
I have a question.
Yes.
Before we move on. It sounds like there's some general consensus support for the idea of setting funds aside for a, for a granting program. And I, I support that as well. I'd love to see staff work on a proposal for us of, you know, proposed amounts and structure for such a program, also with the parameters and guidelines for what would fall into the acceptable type of project so that we you know, we can be sure that we're fielding requests that will provide funds according to the guidelines and do the most good through the community with, with these funds as they're allocated so that it's not just, ideally not just a general hey, apply to the county for money, but that it is to meet these specific, these specific guidelines. And also perhaps for another meeting, it would be good to get more specific information about those additional, it was, it was referenced in the first slide and NACO does have a great set of resources for learning more about all of these funds, but perhaps, you know, to oversimplify it, a cheat sheet for the council of the specific areas so that, you know, if we do want to talk about broadband, we know we can talk about this fund or these other, these other areas where we can extend our reach and, and help the community even more by participating in these other application programs.
No, that, I think that's a great idea. We're, we're taking notes as, as you speak. We'll try and put something like that together. One of the things that, just a quick comment on these, you know, requests from nonprofits and things, they're, they're generally fairly small. So that's why I was thinking having a pool of funding, you know, and I apologize when I talk small being fifty thousand to a nonprofit, that's a lot of money. To the county, we're dealing, you know, in, in multiple decimals, so, or multiple millions. But if we had a pool of two or three million and were able to address those issues, that's kind of my thought, point, thought at this point. And then those that have access to some of these other resources or could have access, we would help steer them and help guide them to those other resources as well.
And I would also say that we, I would assume, I guess it's not safe to assume, but I would assume absolutely that all of this would be set up in a way that it's not just come, come to the county and, and but that it would be very, and frankly, I'd like the council to, to actually see that criteria prior to it ever being.
And I, my thought, Chair O'Brien, is maybe we have a council actually sit in developing that program with us. Would, would someone like to be involved in that? I know you have a lot to do.
I'm sure others would be.
So, but if, if you'd like to help in developing that and then, you know, of course, everything is going, before anything is spent, it always will come back to you. So we're, we're getting guidance direction. We're going to formulate more details for each of these areas. But it will always come back to you for, for approval before any of it's spent. So. Okay. If there's no other questions, we're going to kind of summarize here. We have.
Sorry, Counselor Olson.
Sorry. Yeah, Mark, I just wanted to sort of get, circle back around on this Clark Regional wastewater request and the North County EMS request. Is that something that you're looking to us today for?
No.
Any direction on or just?
No, those, if, those would be part of this pool that we would find outside requests in. If, and it sounds like you want to go that direction. So we will, we will put that together.
Okay. So even though they're not nonprofits, you would put them in that same process, through that same process?
Yes.
Because it seems to me like when we worked with Clark PUD, we did that in a sort of a different format. We dealt sort of directly with them for ratepayers, that this would sort of fall into that kind of process rather than a, a nonprofit grant sort of process.
Yeah, and maybe, you know, that's a good point, Counselor. Maybe we have two separate pools, one for agencies and one for nonprofits.
I think that'd be a good idea.
I'm just throwing that out there. So.
It just seems like they're two different, really two different organizational structures and purposes.
Yeah. The other thing, Counselor Olson, is with things like regional wastewater, there are other funding sources as well that we can leverage rather than strictly the, the county direct distribution. And we would want to work with them to make sure that we're we're looking at all of the options that they have. It's really easy to come to the county and say, you know, can, can you help us here? And we say, well, yes. With CRF, it was a little bit different. We were under a very tight timeframe. And it was very focused on how we were going to deliver that funding. This is, we have a little bit more time to work with, with this funding. In fact, a lot more time to work with this funding several years. And so we can work with those utilities, but there are, there is a lot of funding designated specifically for utilities that we would want to work with them with as well.
So maybe that's additional. Do you deal with that separate from the grant piece? But, okay, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Other questions? I'm, I don't want to.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So Laura, if you want to go over, here's, here's a timeline. We're almost midpoint on this timeline already, but we'll, we'll go through this and then we have one more slide. And I think that's, that's all we have for you today and some direction that we're asking for. So.
Sure. Thank you, Mark. So as Mark mentioned, this is just a, a brief snapshot of the timeline we're working with and currently. So ARPA was signed into law in March, the interim final rule and guidance we received in May, which allowed us to proceed. And then the funds were released in June. The reporting guidance just released June seventeenth. And now today, the council work session, we're requesting guidance. When we receive the Treasury final rule, it will be approximately the end of July or early August. That allows us to complete the final revenue loss calculations. And then there is this annual recovery plan performance report due August thirty first, which I'll cover in the next slide. Next slide, please. So today we're seeking approval from council to move forward with the proposals for fiscal year twenty twenty one as follows. Oregon Public Health Emergency Response and Readiness, Technology Services, Infrastructure and Cybersecurity Improvement. Prosecuting Attorney and Indigent Defense Case Backlog Remediation, Space Planning Reconfiguration and Justice Center Remodel, and Development of an External Applicant Funding Request Process. We're asking council today for feedback and approval for these proposals and permission to proceed with planning the twenty twenty two fiscal year proposals. As noted, all departments' requests will include staff reports and budgets when requests are submitted to council for final approval. And with regard to the, the, the public facing annual performance report, I'd also like to note through the council's reference that this public facing community engagement component is a required reporting component. And, and as public facing, the annual recovery plan performance report needs to be posted on our website. And a significant component of this is equity focused community engagement. So the, the externally facing nonprofit community engagement component is important to the spirit and intent of the grant. And so we do have a preliminary community engagement plan to share in our future meeting. And I've been working with the communications team to develop that outward facing web based program. Next slide. Thank you so much for your time. If there are any more questions?
Yeah, let's roll back to that one first. We want to make sure that, that council's in agree that we continue working on these, these specific areas and bring back these staff reports for specific spending. If there's an area that you don't want us to focus on, we will not continue to go that direction. So.
Just to comment. I think all of these areas are very well done. Thank you. It just looks terrific. I just want to come back to body cams for a second. They are already requested in that other pot of funds, correct? So they don't need to be in this pot because they're in a, a different area of this funding, right?
Right. The, the issue with body cams is not so much the, the purchase of those, which I believe we can, we can fund. It's the ongoing support for many years, well past the federal funding that we've received. So it's, it's a different issue. These are all one time projects that will be done, completed and spent within the next three to five years.
Yeah, and I was thinking of just the actual purchase of the cams.
Oh, yeah. I, I, again, most body cam programs, we're able to use federal funds for the, the significant portion of it. And, and we have one time funds available for the rest of it. It's, it's always the ongoing support that we're dealing with. So.
Right. Just wanted to be sure that was covered. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions or comments from the council on this? Okay, it looks like we're giving. Sorry.
Sorry, I was trying to find my cursor. It was all over the, I just wanted to double tap on what Counselor Bowerman just said. We have such a great opportunity here and Mark and all your staff, what great work you're doing. This is a good, solid start. And I think you've captured all of the areas that we've been inquiring about. So thank you for this work. We have a lot more ahead of us and I look forward to it.
Well, thank you, council. It's, I, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're moving the direction that you're intending us to go. So we're going to have regular feedback with you. Like I mentioned, everything's, as we get more specific, will be coming to you. But we need to have this direction as, as Laura mentioned, in August, we have to have a report prepared for our spending plan. This gives us that direction. It allows us to put in the performance measures that are required under this program. Each, each of these areas will have performance measures that will have to be determined upfront, what our objectives are, what the performance we expect out of them. And the, the government is requiring, the Department of Treasury is requiring those measures to be to be communicated and, and we will be striving to meet those. So it's, it's a very sophisticated reporting measure. It's not, here's your money, you know, go with it. But this gives us the guidance that we need to work with the departments to develop that detail. And some have been doing that already. Let me tell you, they've been very, very diligent in providing us information. So.
Okay, thank you so much. I, I would extend that thanks that has been given for all the work that you've done on this. And we look forward to you, going forward with it all. And, and of course, this, this sort of set aside for nonprofit grants and for other, you know, agencies. So we'll be, we'll be listening and, and waiting to see how that turns out. And, and then I'll check with other counselors as you know, as to their desire to maybe be in on this grant.
If you think about what we did, remember a few years ago, we formed a group to deal with the mental health sales tax. And, and that allowed us to have a very good process. Something similar to what we did with mental health sales tax, I think, would be a real, real helpful in this situation. So.
I think so too. That sounds good. Because there's good vetting for that. So.
Yep.
Okay. If there aren't any more questions, council, if you have no more questions or comments, we'll allow Mark and Laura to, to go do some other work.
I, I, I appreciate the, the time. I'm actually headed to the airport. So.
Okay, great, great. Thank you so much, Laura. Good to meet you. Okay, we're going to go ahead then to begin our council time